We're ready. Let's carry this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Ron, before you get too deeply into your presentation, I asked Kim Clauser to step in from the Human Resources Department so that we can discuss the issue of the eclipse and how we're going to deal with that. And I think we talked the last time about the possibility of declaring an emergency closure for part of the day.
I suspect, yeah.
So this has got to highlight it. So this is our current policy for emergency closings. And I think we talked about the eclipse as a natural hazard. There'll be a lot of man-made hazards that day probably as well. It is a scheduled workday for the county. We already know that the schools in the county are going to be closed on that day. We've had a couple of conversations with department heads and elected officials about how they-
I'm not sure all schools are closed. I think it's going to be an e-learning day.
Could be an e-learning day where they'd be working from home, but-
They will not be attending.
Will not be attending school, going to the building. So what are we going to do? We've talked about several options. So, Kim, why don't you explain? And Steve, because I know you've worked on personnel policy extensively, what our current emergency closing process and policy says?
So we passed out Section 5.03, emergency closing. And I have highlighted, I talked to Steve this morning, the two of us, our recommendation will be the portion that is highlighted on the third paragraph. For these departments to have employees that are required to work on those days, the department head or elected official may determine it is appropriate to grant an alternative day off. However, this alternative day off shall not be granted if the department head or elected official has determined that it is not in the best interest of the department's daily operations or requirements. And it'll be our recommendation to amend this policy and to strike those two sentences. Because in the past, when we rarely have snow emergencies and closures, we've already identified in the past the essential workers. So there's only one department that actually takes advantage of this policy. So Sheriff's Department has never, 911 has not taken advantage of this. It is one department, so we're recommending to strike it. We don't want to go for it.
And didn't we discuss this after the last snow day, which was maybe two years ago?
Yeah.
But we never took action.
That's right.
So I think that was the thinking, that was the thinking, that we should-
And I talked to Mike Sharp. That is the department that has taken advantage of that. And he understands that if his people have to work as essential employees, which very well could call highway all over the county, you don't know where tree's going to come down, or culvert's going to go out, or whatever. And he understands if they work that day, it would be on straight time, and I'm certainly fine with that, just because there will be approximately 144 essential workers on duty that day out of our total workforce. And then if they do have, with April 8th being on a Monday, there very well could be hours requiring to be worked in the remaining days that week that could take highway workers, sheriff's department workers, over 40 hours that week, at which case, and in only that case, would they be paid time and a half if they go over 40 hours. But I think we could brace ourselves to expect a little overtime among those essential workers.
There definitely will be overtime.
For the sheriff's department in particular, if they call people in to work-
Yeah, I think there's all hands on deck, all that weekend, actually. And remember that, and that would be applicable to those employees that are working that day, that those are hours' work. So any time it's over 40, you get time and a half. But for the other ones that go home, but they're still being paid, these aren't considered hours' work. And so they would not meet that 40-hour threshold should they have additional hours the rest of the week to be paid time and a half. They'd be paid at time, not time and a half.
So if we strike this couple of sentences-
For those departments, or for these departments down to requirements-
Yes.
... down to requirements, we could still, commissioners could still make an exception to the policy if there was some just completely unforeseen-
Seven days of snow days, or whatever, then we could say.
Forty days of rain, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So we could make exceptions. So is there consensus that we should strike those two sentences in the third paragraph? From "for these departments" down to "daily operational requirements"?
I'll make that motion, strike the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So that part is strictly now.
At last meeting, I promised to try to put a fiscal impact on what it would cost to pay people not to work afternoon on April 8th. And, you know, and I toyed with the idea of paying people holiday pay, those essential workers. I have abandoned that idea because all of those people who would be working on April the 8th understand that's part of their job.
It's in their job description.
So they would be eligible for overtime should they go over 40 later in the week. And chances are with April 8th being a Monday, they will. Some will.
So-
Yeah, but just so you have an idea of the numbers, we have approximately 380 total workers with 15 being part-time. So we will pick up some revenue by not paying the part-time people for not working. But that's only, that's less than $1,000 of picked-up savings. But of those 380 there, 365 approximately on April 8th, we don't know exactly, but about 365 full-time workers, of which 29 are in highway, three in buildings and grounds, about 100 in the sheriff's department. And we're just assuming that all 100 will be working, but, you know, even if there's 10 that are going to be paid not to work, just working in, and probably 12 afternoon in EMA, including 911. So that's 144 essential workers who will be doing their normal jobs. So that doesn't have fiscal impact of any kind. It's just workers doing their work, being paid straight time. That leaves 221 people that we would, that would be eligible for the emergency closing policy. So what I'm recommending, and I think we're talking about here, is just following our revised emergency closing policy for the safety of our people and not contributing to the traffic by dumping 221 cars into the traffic melee at 4:30 to 5 o'clock on a Monday.
And also to make it easier to use the grounds here as a staging area for emergency personnel. There are a number of reasons why we would do this. So again, I think the conversation kind of settled on last week, when we talked about the building being open until noon that day, and then being closed from noon until 6:00, people going home. And then starting at 6:00, second shift people reporting who are not essential workers, because the essential workers are going to report throughout the day. But non-essential workers reporting at 6:00 that evening, which hopefully by then, things will have calmed down a little bit. And that really impacts just a few people who are second shift but not essential workers, right? Just a couple of, you're in part three of three.
Right, that's the three in buildings and grounds that we're talking about. And, you know, and this way, if the courts have to stay open, fine, and the security in the courthouse are included in the 100 sheriff's department. So if they have to have security in the courthouse, fine.
The judges that I have talked to, and I believe I've talked to all of them, my understanding is if we're closed that day, or part of that day, and they will, if they have something scheduled, they will reschedule so that they can close at noon that day. So I think if we're, by all means, let's have discussion if-
Make that motion that we're closed April 8th from 12:00 p.m. noon to 6:00 p.m.
Well, we're normally closed at 5:00.
Right, but again, for the people that, three people, second shift-
They will come in at 6:00.
At 6:00.
Oh, okay, but they'll be paid from 2:30?
Yeah, they'll be paid from 2:30.
Whole shift starts.
Okay, so that makes it 224 people that will be paid not to come into work. Okay. And as a side, the highway department, Mike Sharp feels that it's far better to send his people home at noon because he wants to send them home with equipment throughout the county because they'd be able to respond faster should they have to be out there.
And then be on call.
Right, and they're all on call, they understand they can't leave the county, and they have to leave, whatever. So the dollar amount that that motion is going to cost us to pay people not to work, theoretically, but it's already budgeted, so there's no new money. But in case anybody asks, what is it costing the county to pay these people not to work? This is roughly 5% of the total payroll that week, that pay period. In case you want to know what a pay period costs the county, it's $738,439, but this is only 5% of that pay period. I estimated this wouldn't be that costly to send people home, and for all the good reasons you already cited, that total amount is $22,133 to impose our emergency closing policy. So I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Just the caveat that now we've got some time, we need to make sure we communicate this effectively to the public, that we're closed that afternoon, and to our employees, department heads, elected officials, so that they know exactly how this will work. With that, if there are no further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Appreciate you being here. And we'll update the policy then and share that with all of our supervisors as well.
And we can announce it at council tonight as a decision.
We can, yes. All right, Ron.
Okay. Welcome back. Yeah, great to be back. I think last week you were presented with a sheriff with the specifications- Bearcat, okay. I didn't want to have the wrong headline name. From Lenco, and I'm not sure exactly where you left it, but for this, treat it as a special purchase. You need to admit it, reflect it. This is a product that can only be acquired from a sole source supplier, which is Lenco. And they have provided a certificate to that in fact, with the documents that I was left, so.
I think that's where we left it, Ron, was we want the county attorney to review this and make sure that we're-
Sole source supplier qualifies as a special purchase under C5, 2210-8, and under C5, 2210-13, you must find out, you must determine the purchase, made it in writing, that there's only one source for such supply. So I would advise you to make that writing, the contract, Lenco, this is ARPA.
This is ARPA funding for $350,000, and then the sheriff's department is paying the rest, $20,000 or something like that.
Check the box off options, but it was like 374.6 or 375.
So, and the sheriff has committed to pay the balance, but we'll pay 350 out of ARPA. So what we need is a motion to approve the contract for the Bearcat with that stipulation that it is a sole source supplier.
Qualifying as a special purchase under-
Qualifying as a special purchase. So moves.
Second.
Motion in a second. Anything you need to add to the motion?
Only that, in due course, I assume that someone will make sure that Lenco is not a, is in fact, not-
Not debarred.
Not debarred, the negative is, but it's still in good standing.
So add that to the motion.
Add that to the motion.
Add that to your second.
Second, yeah.
Okay. With that, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we'll proceed with the contract to purchase the Bearcat. What else have you got, Ron?
I think I had forwarded to me from you, Jeff, bankruptcy documents and bankruptcy court for Northern Michigan, Indiana. This is a bankruptcy of a Ireland-based company that produces some opioid products who out there leave. This is just inviting us as holder of a potential local claim to approve or disprove the recommended plan. If we do nothing, we're deemed to approve it. We don't like here, I don't think, because we're what's known as a Class 6B claimant, and any recovery we get will be derivative of the fact that Indiana has filed as a state or, and I think, rather than muddy that water, we create burdens for somebody to justify or quantify any claim we would have on a standalone basis. I think we just wait until the state do this thing.
That's kind of what I thought, just giving it a cursory look.
Yeah, I gave it a little more of a cursory look, but a cursory understanding is what I'm giving you.
And there's so much precedent on this with the state distributing. Their formula for distribution is kind of curious because White Water, for example, gets more than Milton's distribution. And why that is, I do not know.
Isn't there some element to the formula that takes into account how many people have died from overdoses?
One would think so, but Milton has had more fatalities than Whitewater. So it just doesn't make sense to me. I've tried to figure out their formula, but it doesn't, it defies logic. But since there's so much precedent with opioid settlements being distributed without having to make this kind of a deal, I think we should accept Ron's recommendation that just, and meanwhile, no update on when we can expect our 2023 distribution?
So we don't need to take action then? We'll just-
Put it in your trash, in mine, I love it.
I think yours, yours one.
According to Joe, he indicated that the sheriff had another issue on a personnel matter, but I am not really clear. Using opioid settlement monies for an employment position, I don't know if that was the thing I needed.
Is that about the Navigator?
I think it's something to do with the Navigator.
We haven't, we haven't made a recommendation for ARPA funding on that.
Good. I mentioned in, we talked about penny litigation, that we had that one lingering would be class action. It's going to get discussed Monday. We have a partial summary judgment. We really, we really don't fit the class of defendants if it were revived, but essentially, it's probably going to be appealed because we got a partial summary judgment that supports the clerk's positions, that they were rightfully charging the fees that were in question. And those courts that had adopted the electronic filing during that gap period of time, we had not. We were one of the later courts that did electronic filing. So for Wayne County, it's just not an issue. I guess somebody who's a relative of one of the county's attorneys had a matter in Wayne County, so they just added them. That's the only thing you have to figure out. So that'll go away.
Okay. That goes back a couple of years, then?
19, 2019. Marion Superior Court 12.
Back to the opioid settlement, assuming that we will receive this next month, our large amount of opioid settlement. I think we do need to have criteria for awarding opioid settlement money. So I would like to draft that for your consideration. And here's the direction I'm going, given the request that we've had already. I think that it should be vastly different than our 2022 distribution, so that certain elements of that requirement for awards in, for 2023 funding, which is all that we're talking about now, we don't have 2024 on the horizon for a long time, but, or 2023 awards. I'm thinking that the requirements should include not just long-term recovery, but also to reduce recidivism or incarceration due to opioid addiction or dealing. Also, another important attribute that makes it really different is demonstrated sustainability of the programs that we're talking about, which I think would eliminate a lot of the programs that applied last year, because there is just no end in sight to how long so many of the treatment programs and the like would have to rely on opioid settlement. Whereas the two building together, and the Navigator that's been proposed to us, do have long-term sustainability forecasts, and if they don't, we are not going to be able to sustain either of those programs because of the decline in settlement funding.
Not enough money going forward.
So with those two criteria, I think we can still be satisfied, the state's requirement for being quite public about our requirements, and we are allowed to be, you know, to set our own requirements within Exhibit E for the restricted.
I'm happy to have you-
That line of thought kind of, and then our scoring of the applications would fall from that guidance on applications. Does that sound something that you would, by going down the right direction?
I think if you want to draft something along those lines, that would make some sense to me.
Is there anything else that you think should be included in our guidance for opioid settlement distribution?
The only thing I can think of is I think this year, we want to maintain more flexibility in the unrestricted money, so that if there's something we want to fund, for whatever reason, there's not enough money in the restricted funds, that we can do whatever we want to with unrestricted, including supplementing money that we gave to a restricted use.
I think clearly we can say that of the roughly $400,000 combined, restricted and unrestricted, the guidelines for, that, I just stipulated, you know, sustainability and recidivism and all that, only pertains to the 70%. You know, if we make it clear that that only pertains to the 70% restricted, not the 30% unrestricted, clearly you could give more than 70% to those programs that satisfy our restricted funds, but making it clear that those only apply to the 70%. In our guidelines, that should be, does that satisfy your concern?
Yes, go ahead and work up the draft, and we'll take a look.
Yeah, I think we ought to have that ready to go in the event the money comes earlier than expected.
Fair enough. Ron, what else have you got for us?
We have an employee of the highway, former employee of the highway department, whom we sent via CDL training, came back and assigned two months later, under the agreement we had with him, which he has signed. He agrees to reimburse the county a pro-rata amount of that, which in this instance would be $4,537.15. I understand he's made two payments, and basically, this was February, last day of work, so 23.
So a year.
So it's been over a year, and he's not moving on, so I would like your authorization for me to pursue it if necessary to file what?
I think we have to.
No problem at all.
I don't want to be part of his training ground.
I mean, I think-
He signed the agreement, understanding that if we left, he would need to pay back the pro-rated shares.
You know, they need the motion, minutes, just reflect consensus that we pursue the collection.
So moves.
Motion in second to allow Ron to pursue that issue. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Steve, I think you brought it up last week, and I'm not sure exactly what, if anything is to be done or by whom, but as part of ARPA funding, there's a concern that we need a quarterly check, continue to check. I don't know. I think we can easily do that with those for whom we know there is a contractual relationship between us and/or the grantee of our award, sub-sub, on the ARPA.
I don't think we have to for, it's just in dot.
Just in dot?
It's just for in-dot, that's applicable. Which is, which Brandon is on top of that, and he understands that he needs to do quarterly checks, but not for the subcontractors, just for the-
Probably material suppliers, bigger issue, you have our big contract.
You mean for in-dot's contracts?
Yeah.
Yeah, that question was posed to Brandon, how he's going to do it, and I think he went.
He's aware of it, he's worked it through. I think, I think it's only the general contractor, and we're not, we're not buying the materials for those contracts.
And remember, Brandon would ensure that the language of the contract would be that way, would read that way. So I think, I could not remember, my notes, I thought I prepared a new base agreement for the EDC county to sign for another four-year period.
We looked at the current contract.
I passed that out, but I've gone ahead and changed the dates, but I may have not had that yet.
I don't know, I don't think I, I don't recall seeing that, but-
I'll get that to you then.
The discussion was, the current contract is change the dates and make it, make it for the next four-year period, and it would, it would take effect January 1 of 2025.
Correct. Before they get it in place.
Right, I understand. But it's, so everybody's on the same page.
That's the next four-year cycle. And we do have, it's out there wanting-
Yeah, East Germantown, right.
That's all I have right now. Did Joe miss something?
He may have.
Should we get Ron's opinion on the I-70 aesthetics regarding the county's obligation to join with Richmond on all that?
We don't have an obligation. Richmond doesn't have an obligation, but-
When it comes to aesthetics, I really kind of-
We sat in on-
Why should I?
We sat in on a Zoom conference that the mayor and- We sat in on, we sat in on a Zoom conference that the mayor and Brett Fields and the two of us were people from Endot and the design team that's looking at the expansion of 70 project. We focused almost exclusively on, on the US-40 and I-70 interchange and the US-35 and I-70 interchange. Those are the two that are going to be completely rebuilt as part of this process. So the discussion yesterday was about essentially landscaping. And the locals have the opportunity to pay for upgraded landscaping artwork. I'm sure you've seen that interchanges across the state, across the country, the addition of all kinds of artwork or signage and tree plantings, flower plantings. But all of those come with the requirement to sign an agreement to maintain that, which has been added, is not standard Endot parts of a contract. So they will do some landscaping, but you see the landscaping of the current interchanges and it wouldn't be dramatically different from that. So the city is interested in looking at that. Certainly are opportunities for the private sector to participate in that kind of planning. It's, it's something that is available to the county if we choose to pursue it. I'm not sure that it makes a lot of sense for us. Most of these things are going to be very expensive. They have to be maintained, but I'm happy to talk to you.
I mean, campers world to put an RV out there and make a paywall. Everybody knows that interchange.
So, you know, the one, the one question I had is whether US-27 could be upgraded with that interchange in some way. Because I have heard from time to time that Reed Health and IUVs and maybe even Hy-Tech would be interested in some kind of upgrades to that interchange that designates it as the education, healthcare interchange.
All right, all right.
And so maybe that would be something.
Maybe we should just set some kind of task force up and invite these entities that may have an interest in it. We're just facilitating that, we're not funding it.
I think the city should, should take the lead on that. I've talked to Ron or reached out to him.
All three interchanges are within Centerville, thirty-five not.
Actually, none of them are within the city.
Really?
They're all county property.
In the county? But it's, it's not county property in the sense that we own it, obviously Endot.
In the county, but within.
Endot, it's within Endot's.
Not in the municipality.
Correct.
City.
Yeah, there's one exception to that, I believe, in Centerville. They annexed that Centerville Road and Interstate 70 interchange. So, but that's a future phase of the project. So at any rate, let's, let's be open to discussion. I think anytime we can partner with, with both private sector and public sector entities that want to do something, we should do that. We should be open to discussion and ideas.
Oh, absolutely.
Certainly don't want to commit at this point to any kind of participation, maintenance of those interchanges.
I have a nice, we have a statue over the courthouse.
That would be affordable.
That's true. We have the Indian statue vaporized.
Now, there is one exit, 137, on the western entrance for eastbound travelers as you enter Wayne County, that they, that Endot does not consider, at this point, be one of the interchanges to enhance aesthetically.
My understanding is that they're only really interested in the ones that are being rebuilt, and that is 40 and 35. The rest of them are not even being upgraded, including 27. So in the future, at some point, they may provide that opportunity when they rebuild those interchanges.
But by Endot's own admission, they recognize that the aesthetics at that interchange are much to be desired because of their.
Particularly the Endot substation, which is, is now more or less closed, but it's still, it still houses a lot of junk. I mean, they don't, they don't mow it enough, they don't remove all the filled dirt and gravel piles and all that stuff. And we have pursued that with the governor's aid.
For many years.
And, and I think we need to keep pushing on that to get.
Well, that's, that was something I was thinking about on the, on the east side interchange, that we should engage with the government. That's a state line.
Right.
You know, some funding from them to welcome to Indiana kind of stuff also.
We've brought it up, it's been promised that they will look at it, but nothing, no commitment has been made other than on the interchange.
I think what they're going to do though, welcome to Indiana, that's best stop at Centerville is the Welcome Center.
Is the Welcome Center.
Correct. And. Best bound traffic.
And, and I heard it was something like a forty-two million dollar upgrade, so.
Yeah, it was just in the paper yesterday for legal ads.
But that was not, that was rebuilt.
Not too long ago.
Too long ago.
And how it's going to be full, full blown Welcome Center, like you see going into Kentucky or.
If they just spilled five percent of that forty-two million at the actual gateway to Indiana, we could have a very nice entry to Indiana. And frankly, as we look at the gateways to Indiana on our interstate system, Terre Haute and Richmond are really the largest gateways for traffic because, you know, sixty-five, I mean, up there in the Calumet, that, that is, sure, there's a lot of traffic up there, but sixty-nine just sort of dies on the Ohio River. And, you know, there's not much traffic by comparison to I-70 on that east-west corridor.
Sixty-five and seventy-four don't have much.
No.
There really isn't very much in Wayne.
It's Vigo and Wayne Counties that really welcome travelers to Indiana. And in yesterday's Zoom, we, we brought up, hey, can't tourism help us? And, you know, the response was, well, you could maybe get $4,000 maximum from the Arts Commission, which, you know, not much, but I really think tourism is, Indiana tourism is our greatest hope. But the looming deadline here for our fiscal contribution is May one.
To do something in this contract.
Yeah, on this phase, we're supposed to tell them by May one, which is what Richmond and Wayne County are willing to do on these two.
If you're wanting the city to take the lead on it, we'll, we'll continue to talk with Mayor and see, see where we go with this. By all means, reach out to your contacts and see what kind of interest there is. And we can talk to council about it, but I'm not sensing any particular urgency on council's part to be a financial contributor to, to that program. We'll continue the discussions. Okay.
Unless you want to be part of your chair. I think it's advisable due to, as we're all aware, to formally rescind the memorandum of understanding between the county and the Animal Welfare League, Inc., dated as of, dated June 10, 2014.
Ten years ago.
Misunderstandings going forward. I know we tendered a proposed contract to them, the Brothers Dots, the same contract.
I would agree that this ten-year-old agreement ought to be ended.
Formally.
Formally ended. So is there, I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to end the agreement with Animal Welfare League.
A W L.
Yeah, I think A W L.
As of today's date. Further discussion?
Does that, by, by making it February 21st, does that require us to pay them through February 21st?
We'll sort that out later. Let's just make sure that we end it. I don't think we can end it ten years ago.
Retroactively.
We'd have to end it today.
I just wondered if by doing that, we owe them seven weeks of.
I think we'll, we'll, we'll do that and we'll discuss it further on a later date.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to end that agreement. Further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries, that agreement is officially ended.
Now, do you wish to contact the president or so advise?
I'll, I'll know that we have official ending that agreement.
Okay, that's all I got now.
But we have an invoice, shouldn't we deal with that?
It's not an invoice.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's a, it's a letter. So we'll, we'll discuss that. And I think we'll, we'll look at calling a, an executive session for next week to discuss that.
Yeah.
Well, we have advertising.
That's why we're going to do it next week.
Do you want to do it before the meeting or at the end of the meeting? I'm trying to think what we have next week.
Be at the end one.
Yeah.
So that we can do work during the, during our regular session and then hold the executive session immediately following the, immediately following the regular meeting. Okay, so we'll get that outside Bob. Okay.
I'll help in that, Bobby.
Let's, anything else? Okay, Steve?
Looking at your project sheet, this is what will be shared with the council tonight. And not much change from last week that you've seen, except that you've got four projects that material is on order, and those are the approximate delivery dates. The Health Department awning, the EMA ejector pump panel, the Annex ejector pump panel, and the Annex sump pump panel. Those parts are all on order. You can see those delivery dates on your sheet. The First Bank Expo Hall, HPAC, those units were delivered yesterday and they have been set on the pads. And they, they, the contractor will be in next week to install the electrical panel hookups inside. And then there's obviously thermostat wiring and balancing the system. So we're getting, I think they're, they're going to meet the, the first March timeframe that they had established. And then I haven't got anything back yet from SAS on the revised for the prox card lock system yet.
Okay.
Or a few after then. Yeah. Then on internal controls, we have received back from every department, they identify their employees, the all-in-one definition of requiring retraining for internal controls. That list has been given to Kim at HR. She'll be scheduling some training sessions in that mandatory video that has to be watched according to State Department accounts, since Kim will set that up. She's also updating their job descriptions to ensure that the language needed for this continuing requirement is in each one of the job descriptions. So I'm sure you'll see that conversation come up over the next couple of months with respect to changing some job descriptions. And Beth is putting together a template, language that will be used versus department to establish their internal control policy. That'll come to you then, remember, you're the responsible entity for adopting the internal control policy. In the deed sale, I passed out to you a calendar of the deed sale process. And you can see the deed sale is set for April 25th at 10:00 a.m. And as of last week, there are still about thirty-three parcels on the deed sale list. That list has been distributed to various departments in county government as well as to the city to look at those parcels that are still on the deed sale list, to be able to give you folks feedback as to whether or not you want to take titles to these. And you can kind of see the timeframe. This, this will go to the judge, actually, it's gone to the judge day before yesterday, but they won't sign it until the March 20th deadline or timeframe the judge signs the order. So I think you go to the judge days and they will give you the feedback. And then, so, so next week, I'll probably have a list, or you, like we did last year, remember, a list of properties and what we found, so that you can start your discussion as to whether or not these properties you want to take titles to.
And so, and we've got until March 20th to work that out.
Yeah.
Pass a date certain, you know?
Yes, yes, yes.
And I would just say that we've had discussions with the mayor to make sure that we're as up to date and aware as we possibly can be about any kind of unsafe building action that the city is contemplating, whether or not they've started the process or not, we want to know if they're even thinking about.
Now, there's some on this list that they have already taken action on. And part of the link for taxes includes fees that have been assessed, a lien of the city.
So a couple of means that they've already taken down whatever they're going to take down, right? So they're, they're mostly vacant parcels.
Yeah, we'll have photos, up-to-date photos for you to look at as well, to make sure what you're looking at. Have you had any conversation with SRI about any potential for us to share?
No, I have not.
Assuming not, but we don't want to make that assumption.
I saw them and talked to them at our conference in November. And they have, have had no problems at all since.
If he was arrested.
Exactly.
Do they feel that they lost a number of bidders in September by not advertising nationwide?
Of course, they couldn't tell for sure, but.
I think their plan would be to go back to normal mode of operation.
They were pretty certain that, that we had an abbreviated sale because of the way we had to handle it.
And do you feel that now we should allow SRI to go cast their nets wider?
I do.
Let's let them know that because we don't want.
They said they're going back to normal.
That's the plan.
Oh, is that what you meant? Okay.
That's what I understand from that. That's my understanding as well.
Normal would be to cast them as wide as they have in the past. Okay, good.
So that's all on the deed sale then? You'll, again, you'll see the, hopefully, the first, first list to look at next week so that we can.
So let me interrupt you there because we've, we've had a couple of conversations, Ron, about that the county is able to give these properties to a municipality. And we've given several to the city of Richmond for, what, $250 to pay the cost of processing. Per. But can we, do we have the legal authority to give these parcels to a not-for-profit, to a 501(c)(3)? Because I think in the past, we've given it to the city and then the city transferred it to a 501(c)(3). But can we do that directly?
I would have to look, I, I think we have, we have limitations on it. I mean.
We've had some requests from.
Certainly neighborhood services, you know, the city's acted as a conduit to get a lot of.
Also, Tim Pearson's group, was that building?
Bridges for Life subsidiary called Building Together. Now, I know back ten years ago, Hagerstown had a property. Now, I know back ten years ago, Hagerstown had a property that was going to go into the deed sale. But we gave it to Hagerstown and they subsequently gave it to Habitat for the Manor.
Okay, and Habitat has requested some of these properties as well, so... You know, if that's the process, if we need to go to the city and then to the organization, we can do that. It seems like it could save a lot of trouble if we could give it directly if we have that.
And, or... All these properties are within the corporate fund.
Which, there's two, there's two that's not. Rest of them are all, thirty-one of them are in the city records.
Or perhaps...
Thirty-one of thirty-three, you said?
Correct, thirty-one.
Thirty-three that are on the deed sale list. Not all on the deed sale list are subject to... Some of them are gonna let go to deed sale, I'm like...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, absolutely.
I'll, I'll take it with that.
Yeah, I, I think when we say give to, I think especially with the nonprofit, we would want them to cover the costs of the title search and it's so that there would be, what, a few hundred dollars change in?
Like when you would say, if it's a bare lot, it'd be two fifty, if it's a bare lot, it'd be two fifty, if it's got a building on it, it'd be six fifty.
Six fifty. Okay, so wouldn't we say give, we'd mean to cover our out-of-pocket costs?
Correct.
And then the last thing, you have a copy in front of you of the proposed supplemental service agreement with American Legal Publishing. This will be the first time you look at this, so I'm not asking you to take action today, but I do want to point out a couple of things to you. This agreement then would call for two printed copies to be on hand. And I would suggest that one of those would be in the commissioner's office, the other one would be in the clerk's office, since that would be the violation here of payment of certain fines if, if they were imposed. On the second page then is the cost of this agreement. For whatever we sent, about five years' worth of orders that have not been codified in our books, that cost to bring those up would be up to forty-two hundred dollars. Plus shipping and handling. And then anything subsequent to that, this update would be based upon, any increases would be based upon the Consumer Price Index. So if they did adjust their fees, it would be tied to that. For example, twenty twenty-three was three point four percent, twenty twenty-two was three point two percent. And then to have this online as opposed to hard copies, there's a one-time setup fee of not, five ninety-five and an annual hosting fee of four ninety-five. So, the one-time fee of five ninety-five and the annual fee thereafter of four ninety-five. And any new ordinances then that we would incorporate, remember we would get two, two printed copies and it would also be incorporated on the online copy. And that cost then would be the twenty-two dollars per page, that's for the editing and the printed copies. And then the online addition is a dollar ninety-five a page. So, those costs would be every time you update something, that's what you would have.
Now, that's main editing work. I get a little nervous when I see an outside organization editing an ordinance. Can you describe what they do for that twenty-two dollars per page of editing?
No.
They don't edit our ordinance, do they?
Well, they don't change, they don't change it. I mean, they, they edit for grammar or they, and they insert it into the... I mean, if we, if we make a change to an ordinance, is that, does a whole new ordinance go in or just the change? And, and that was one of the things we had this year. We've had a number of zoning ordinance changes since the nineties. And our, our book, our zoning code book, obviously had all these changes throughout the years. So when we did these last changes, then with the solar ordinance, she rewrote it, she didn't rewrite, she...
Consolidated everything.
Consolidated the entire ordinance. And so, what, what we sent to American Publishing looked like the entire zoning... So they actually had to go through and pull out the changes so that they would only charge us for the amendment. So, anything we subsequently send to them will be just the language that's amended. They sent the whole ordinance this year.
Do we know of other counties that use them and post things online?
Oh, there are, I think it's eighty out of ninety-two counties use it.
There's several towns doing it, I, I think, I think Cambridge City does.
Hagerstown, Cambridge City, and, and there's a list of those, if you go to their website, you can see.
I think it would make sense to talk to some of them and see, how much are you paying on an annual basis due to changes in your ordinances or additional ordinances? And how do you like it, how do you work? Because I've, I've never seen this, I've never talked to anybody who's said, we probably should do that before engaging a new contract. And it's gonna have to fit within our contractual line item, budget line item, or we're gonna have to go back to council and say, we're gonna need an extra thousand dollars a year to pay for this.
Yeah, I'd like to get an idea of what this is gonna cost. For example, if we add three words on page two that forces a fifty-page document to become a fifty-one-page document, does that cost us twenty-two dollars for every page that...
I think, and, and I think it does, I think every time a page is added, regardless of how many words are on it, that's an extra page.
Yeah, if three words on page two force, you know, force it to become a one-page longer document, do we have to pay for the additional changes on...
I think so. But then the next time you add to it, then they're gonna fill in that page. If your next change fits on the blank space of that page, then I don't know whether they charge you another twenty-two. I don't know the answer to that.
But what if one line from page six makes all the other pages, you see, I'm...
I think somebody that uses them and has used them for a few years can tell us all of that.
I mean, we're looking at septic ordinance, how huge is that ordinance?
Let's, let's follow up with some, some of the folks that are...
This is the first time you've seen this, so I'm not asking for the action.
So when they say they, they edit, they, they don't edit substance?
Change the substance, they're editing for, you know, legal terms and grammar, punctuation.
That can sub... Do we get to see it after they edit it before it's... Anytime I see editing on matters of...
I think you could set those terms.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Okay. That's all you have, questions for Steve? Got several other things here that I wanna discuss with you and some of them will be decision items. So this first one is a, an invoice from Peterson Consulting Services. That is the group that does capital asset recording for us. And there's a bill for four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Now, I know we have, we have used Peterson Consulting in the past, but I don't remember that we contracted with them in twenty twenty-three. Anybody have that recollection? I mean, I thought one of the things is, is the, the insurance company did their own.
This is for the capital assets.
This is for capital asset update.
This is for the state board accounts, capital asset.
So you already have the results of that, supporting that bill? It's already been downloaded into Gateway.
Okay, so we do have, we do have that information.
Yes.
Okay.
And who approved that contract?
Well, I'll tell you in just a second, I think I did. It was a carryover contract, no, I'm... I've got Jeff Plaster's signature on one item.
Signed it.
Okay, I don't remember.
And...
I don't either.
I don't know that that's on the contract itself. I'm looking for what we had. I think I authorized it based on what county auditors had done in the past. And in fact, I set a limit of five thousand dollars when an entity had a change in their products that they purchased during the year. And I think you changed it to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Correct. So, at any rate, we did receive this service, you have the results of this...
I've got the results, I've got the bill, and we have already downloaded it to Gateway as I'm required to do.
Well, that probably explains why they sent it to you, because you had signed that again in twenty twenty-three. So, if, if you could just keep us informed when, when you do that, that would be awesome. So, let's, uh, let's go ahead and Bobby will need a, will need the paperwork to pay this claim, but can we go ahead and authorize paying four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents out of our contractual line item to Peterson Consulting Services?
Do they have that left in contractual?
What we do at the moment.
At the moment, because it's still February, yeah, that's going fast. So move.
Have motion?
Second.
Have motion and a second, any further discussion?
Uh, I would just like to understand why would this not brought before us as commissioners to offer us?
I, I think it should have been and, and...
Especially if it was...
Sorry?
The original contract was, wasn't it?
That's the one that I signed.
So what's this?
But again, we need to understand whether this fits within our budget. It's gonna be tight, I'm not sure that it will, so at some point, we're gonna have to go back to council, I would guess, and ask for additional appropriation. But this work was done last year, should have been in last year's budget, hopefully.
And will, will it be due again in twenty-five? So we need to consider this on our contractual budget?
I thought they did this every year.
In which case...
But I'm not sure.
In which case, you know, we'll be at eighty-five hundred dollars.
What are they, what are they doing? Are they inventorying, are they...
Capital asset updating services.
So they're invent, they're basically inventorying our capital assets? And our definition of a capital asset is anything twenty-five thousand or over?
Correct.
So I would think they wouldn't need to do it annually. I think we can keep track of what we're acquiring as we go, wouldn't you think?
It would be mainly cars and...
And state board of accounts requires how, how frequent is the update?
They, through this outfit, they do it once a year. And then I load it up on, when they give the report to me, I load it up on the Gateway.
Well, let's have further conversations about it, but in the meantime, we'll cross us paying this claim.
And let's stick a pin in the fact we need to upgrade our consulting budget.
Absolutely.
For twenty-five.
So, I, I agree with Brad.
I would not have given you this claim if you didn't have money.
We have money, but a lot of it is committed because there are monthly expenditures that are planned. So we don't necessarily have forty-two hundred dollars that is committed to this program.
I think we had a motion and a second. We didn't vote.
We did not.
We didn't vote.
Favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Sorry, no, thank you. Okay, Peterson Consulting. There is a requested change in one of the health projects for Milton. Milton had funding committed on the count for upgrades to their sewer system. They had an emergency repair that was necessary. The contractor was, was willing to do before they sorted out, probably would be able to pay for it. So, when I was at their, their meeting last week, they requested that we change the funding, no additional funding, the funding that had been committed through the health program, ARPA money for the sewer system, would instead pay for maintenance, emergency repairs to the sewer system. So apparently the, you recall Milton's situation, their sewage goes to Connorsville for treatment?
Yes.
And so, the, the, the major pipe that goes to Connorsville was completely plugged. And they had to dig it up and take care of that and it cost over forty thousand dollars.
How much?
Over forty thousand dollars, yes. So, so I should have brought the number, I think it's twenty-five thousand-ish that we have committed under the health program to, for improvements to the sewer system. They have requested that we allow them to use that money to pay for these emergency repairs. And I would recommend that we allow that.
They've already put a list, a list of stations as we did every project.
Correct. So, can I get a motion to authorize us to, to pay the same amount of money to them for repairs?
Emergency of over life.
So they wanted twenty-five thousand, is that what they got?
I'll get the exact number, but whatever is currently budgeted...
Yeah, I move that we allow Milton to use the health funds for emergency rather than maintenance.
Have motion and a second and further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
And I would just like to say that emergency sewer payments is why Greensport was unable to participate in the health program. You know, they just had that very safe situation occur prior to, had they not had that, they would have loved to participate now.
This will be my prototype or the interloper.
Good, good. So, speaking of which, Ron has already written a, a prototype that would be used for the Y M C A childcare contribution, a memorandum of understanding. I'll be sending that to the Y M C A to fill out their part of that. We'll get that back, we can review it, and then the idea would be to use that if, assuming it works and doesn't need any additional information, that we'll use that as kind of the template.
Part of it.
For...
Each one would be a bit unique based on the pathway that...
Project and how we're gonna pay.
Project is addressing.
But as we did discuss this with Baker Tilly, that we would be able then to pay the money directly to the entity instead of waiting until a project is completed and paying the contractor. And that way, we move the projects forward more quickly, so...
That's important, that's, that's okay.
We'll work on that and all, yes, it is, it is fine. For the lost revenue funding, it would not be possible for two point seven eight million.
Okay.
That's under original treasury rules, but we're spending that on other things that are own projects. For example, there's, you know, over a million dollars for the Corvus digitizing project. So, so those we're handling directly. These that are using the lost revenue, ten million dollars, we can do this and pay the entity directly as long as they're on five oh one C three. So, moving on. We got a claim and Bobby, did we, did we agree last week, the claim for Help the Animals for their January? Claim, okay. So, so you recall, we, we signed a contract with Help the Animals on a two hundred dollar... on a two hundred dollar per dog basis. And the first claim for January was six hundred dollars. Three hundred, three dogs at two hundred dollars apiece. We got a report and confirmation from the Sheriff's Department on how many dogs they had placed there that tallied with what help said was being placed there for January. So we did approve the claim.
Yes.
To help for six hundred dollars. That'll be being paid this week, probably. And and that's how that will continue. Each month, they'll send us the number of animals and a bill for the number of animals that they took in. We will get a report from the Sheriff's Department. Of course, when I say we, I mean Bobby will. And then Bobby will will put that all together, forward the claim to us for approval and payment. So that is moving forward.
No cats?
No, it it has a separate, you know, it's it's for dogs, two hundred dollars for dogs. Other animals would be on a case like those basis. And wasn't that, what we inserted was other animals we'll look at.
Snakes.
If it's a, if it's a giraffe, it might be two hundred and twelve dollars.
Expect cat, because cats went in to eat last month and so we expect cats and.
Expect cats. Well, speaking of cats, then, let's move on to this request that we got from the Animal Care Alliance, who last year, been working with the kind of ad hoc committee that that was discussing animal welfare for the county. They, Animal Care Alliance did two two spay and neuter projects of the the cat trap neuter release programs. They did one in the city of Richmond on August thirteenth. That involved seventy-two cats being spayed or neutered. And they're requesting reimbursement of three thousand, five hundred, twelve dollars and thirty cents. And then on November twelfth, they did one in Williamsburg. They had twenty cats that were spayed or neutered. And they're requesting nine hundred and forty-six dollars. The grand total, four thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. I did, I just got this this morning. So I immediately reached out to Mayor Olver to see if he's willing to pay the Richmond part of the bill and repay the county part of the bill. Haven't heard back from him yet. I know he's in Indianapolis on a tour of of some subsidized housing projects. But I'll reach out to continue to to talk to him to see if this is something we can split. I'm thinking that that we can use the thirty thousand dollars that was budgeted for animal welfare as part of the help program by the county. There's another thirty thousand dollars that the city has available. If you recall, we each budgeted fifty thousand dollars and ultimately ended up spending twenty thousand dollars apiece for this study that we should have, be having a report on in the coming weeks. And so there's thirty thousand dollars that's already approved and budgeted. This is, I think we can consider this as a regular expense, even if we want to consider doing some more of these in the future. So some split with the city, whether it's a fifty-fifty split or is the, you know, the city pays for the ones in this in town and we pay for the ones outside of Richmond, whatever. I'll I'll bring you back the conversations I I have with Mayor about how that might go. Just want you to be aware of this. I don't think we should go ahead and pay until we sort out the relationship with the city on.
Right. You didn't have to prove residency in Richmond in order to show that your cat resided in Richmond.
And, you know, the cats didn't have to prove their residency either.
I mean.
They could have just been passing through. Maybe they were, some of them were Ohio cats.
Maybe they're holed up under a barricade in the exit one fifty-six A.
It could be.
So they are county residents.
Just county, who knows? So anyway, we'll we'll work with the city and I'll bring you back next week.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can deal with this next week because this is the first I've seen of a bill that goes back to August, so.
Yes, and, you know, I I've had exposure to animal people more during this study that Dr. Pizano's been in Wayne County. And Animal Care Alliance did present the invoice months and months ago to the task force. I mean, the task force was the one that authorized ACA to spend all this money. I mean, they're doing this at bare bones cost.
Which is a good thing. So it could be a good collaborative.
It's not like they hadn't presented this invoice before, but it just never got acknowledged. And so that's how I became aware of it, that they're saying, hey, is there any chance we're ever gonna get paid for it?
Let's see what we can work out with the city.
So the EDC got the, yeah.
Okay, all right. So with that, can you put that on the agenda for next week? Okay, another issue that has come up, I think I talked to you all about my disappointment a few weeks ago that that Oprah had determined that Wayne County was not eligible to apply for this, their new stellar pathways program. I spent some time in Indianapolis over the last month and I I lobbied legislators and went over to Oprah and talked to to their folks about, in my opinion, at at most, the prohibition should apply to the communities that are currently receiving CDVG grant dollars out through the help program. And that everyone else should be eligible to apply. Well, after some conversations, they have agreed. There are two counties, Casillasco County, which which had five entities that were part of the help program. We were the largest group with eight governmental entities that collaborated on help. And so with the exception of communities that are actually receiving the community development block grant dollars, and that is Cambridge City and Delphine. With those two exceptions, the other communities are are able to apply now.
Including Richmond?
Including Richmond, including Wayne County, including every other incorporated town. So the idea is the county and one or more municipalities would be the applicants. And this round, they are allowing not-for-profits that are countywide and have a countywide jurisdiction to be a part of that process. And the foundation has agreed to to be a part of the application to Wayne County Foundation. So remember that these funds are limited in scope to how they can be used, CDVG grant dollars. There also is money from NDOT and there are a couple of other state entities that are committing funds. The process is that we will send you to training on the fourth and fifth of March. So we are, I'm working to get a team together. I have a commitment myself and and Beth Fields from the city are committed to attending that training. We're looking for a couple of other folks to be a part of that. So we will, we will get that together. We will then need approval from all of the entities that choose to apply with us. And so, you know, before I make this two-day commitment, I want to make sure that that you are amenable to us applying for the stellar pathways program. Has a potential of eight million dollars being available to entities in the county. It also has a much more likely potential of having zero dollars because there will be a number of of applicants and there are only two awards to be made, so.
Two awards in what geographic area?
The state.
Oh.
This is.
Is eight million statewide?
Statewide.
Oh, sure.
This is everybody in the state. But the help process was statewide as well. We got a million dollars there. We did apply as a region in twenty eighteen. We were not selected. So this would be the first time that that Wayne County would be an applicant in this process. And I think, I think the rewards are worth the, you know, the investment of time and energy.
You don't lie, you don't know.
Exactly.
You can't win if you don't lie, yeah.
This is a second opportunity to reach out to the communities that could not participate in help, to try to to build those bridges with those folks. And so my intention would be to to extend the opportunity to all or most of the communities in the county that are eligible. And so I'd like for your your permission for me to pull together a group that would attend the training. After the training, we have until May the first to submit a letter of intent to Oprah from that letter of intent, which is pretty extensive, similar to what we did for help. And from that, then, they will select four finalists who will be able to submit and a complete application that is due in November. And then the the awards are made by the end of the year. So.
You need a motion, I'll make that motion.
Motion to allow me to pull together a team to take this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second and any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. I just want to correct one thing I said. I said not-for-profits would be available or would be allowed to be part of the process. And then I said the foundation, the two stipulations of not-for-profits that are allowed to participate, the foundation and a, if it's, if it's countywide and the economic development entity, if it's countywide. So in our case, those two, the EDC and the foundation are both countywide and would be eligible to be participants.
Low municipalities.
Municipalities would be the other. So I kind of misspoke. I wanted to come back and clarify.
EDC.
It's not all profits that have a countywide focus. It's just if our foundation and or our economic development are countywide, they're eligible to be a partner. So they both are. So we've already, we already have at least preliminary approval that the foundation will be involved and I have no doubt that the EDC will be as well.
So a municipality that already has, for example, an LMI certification for having low-income designation, they would be a very likely candidate to want to step up and be a part of this, right?
Sure, sure.
Because all the usual CDVG requirements would be in there, both light and LMI and all that. So if you've already got your LMI in, hey, you, that's that's a good thing. Or if you already have a light designation, so all the. Why was Casillasco and Wayne, was it because of our fifty thousand population plus? Or why were we?
We were excluded because we're both help communities.
Oh, I see.
We were receiving CDVG funding.
Double dipping.
But we weren't. You know, we had, we had allocated that money specifically to Cambridge and the W. And so because we're not receiving any of that money, the city of Richmond is not, none of the other help communities are, they're eligible to apply for this. And I don't know which communities received the CDVG money in Casillasco County, but those entities that are receiving CDVG funding are not eligible, but the rest would be. So that's, that's where we're at. I, I, if you have further questions, you can look at the the Oprah website. It has information about what they're calling stellar pathways this year. So and and it can be as as narrow as the county and one community, but it can be as broad as we choose. One of the things we found, I think, with our two thousand eighteen regional application that their, Oprah is looking for impact. And the farther you spread out the footprint of of your designated region, it it seems the the less impact in a concentrated area. So I think that's part of the, of the, of their scoring criteria of of applications. But I think we need to start out with everybody's eligible. Let's see who's interested in what kinds of projects and are they LMI designated, are they not? Because if they're not, they're not going to be eligible for our CDVG funds. However, they should be eligible for some of the other committed project funds from from Oprah's partners that don't have an LMI requirement on songs. So.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. Well, exactly. I mean, it's, it's not necessarily a good thing to to have a high percentage of low to moderate income.
Sorry about that, however.
But if you do, then you can be eligible for these these funds. Okay. Any other questions on that?
Great, go forth.
Let's, the only, Bobby, what else do you have? I have, I want to talk about ARPA project. But let's go ahead and clear the decks with the the claims and the minutes and then.
I sent you an email, I think it's on the page on Clyde Moberly Road, so if you have any questions.
Okay, okay. I have, have. So we want to expedite the survey, is that what?
Survey.
For Clyde Moberly Road.
Oh, yes. Do you want to talk about that?
Easily, if you have questions.
He's giving questions, I think I can.
But that's, that's the next step. Until we have that, we can't really take it further.
I suppose my only concern is the safety of our highway men entering that quote marked.
Safety of what?
Our, our, our snowplow drivers entering this roadway that is marked private property.
To their, to their road being plowed.
Well, I mean, should we ask our highway drivers to not plow this road that might endanger their safety, that since it's a do not enter private property? I don't want our highway snowplow drivers to be endangered. And if if they say it's private, then maybe we should stop snow plowing Clyde Moberly Road.
Courtesy comment to.
Excuse me. Because their, their students aren't gonna.
School bus drivers.
Make it to the bus.
Go down and pick up students.
Well, and also to the other ten households that aren't claiming that it's there.
How many are beyond where it's posted private property? How many households are beyond? Okay.
Very end of the cul-de-sac and the one, Mr. Powell's, I don't know if he's gonna be proud.
I'm just saying we could lift the blade.
Well, the the issue is the cul-de-sac and whether they can turn around.
They can turn around, but they could also lift the blade.
They still can't turn around. Can't use the, if you're saying, you're saying they shouldn't even go back there.
I think we just do what we continue.
Okay, I.
I think we continue until we get this resolved.
I think we have a path of, and I think at least part of the camp of the letting owners is agreeable, that Mr. Powell is. agreeable, that Mr. Powell is three, two or three, or his camp and the others are.
I'm not sure they really want what they're asking for, is my point.
Well, I'm sure they don't. They don't see the implications. So, anyway, we need to expedite getting the survey.
He actually assigned that consensual entry agreement to his problems.
Okay, good.
But you, at this point, don't think our highway snowplow drivers are endangered, given this current condition?
Say that, that there's no danger, but I don't sense that they're, my one conversation was, no.
Well, we'll talk to Mike and if he has concerns.
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Somewhat, yes, but you get my point.
No, I mean, I don't think we left about anything at least.
So, yes, going forward. Okay, move for approval of the following claims. Jury duty claims dated February 20th and Indiana American Water claims dated February 20th. Mastercard claims dated February 18th. Regular claims dated today, February 21st. Dunn Flex and Garnishments dated February 23rd. Federal taxes and kerf withdrawals dated February 23rd and payroll dated February 23rd. Move for approval on all of these above claims.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Also move for approval of Commissioner Minnet dated February 14th. Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve last week's Commissioner meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Steve, Bobby, anything else we've overlooked?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, then.
One comment about your claims.
Yeah.
Within the next week or two, we'll go to the electronic claims where the officers will scan the claims into the county auditor, will pay them. And I'm not too sure what kind of documents you'll get in regard to those claims, whether you'll have to look on your computers to find them or we still generate a paper copy for you to sign.
I think you should.
Oh, we have to have paper, otherwise how are you going to get our approvals?
You sign them as electronically.
We don't want that.
Let's start.
Talk about that.
Start with the paper version and we'll see where, how it goes.
In the next couple, this Thursday, we'll start figuring out how this is going to work and then the next week after, a week from tomorrow, we'll start meeting with office holders and people to keep, do their claims and.
You're starting with just a couple of offices at a time.
Oh, yeah, we're going to start with, well, we're going to start with my office first.
Good idea.
And then we go, we're going to start discussing with each office personally, not over the internet or not virtual discussion or anything like that. We want to meet with them personally, so, and we will go through what we need to have done to get those claims to us. It'll be a big change. But all the signatures, we've already dealt with the state board of accounts on whether this flies with them. My signature will be virtual. All these documents are stored. You can look on your computer and see them anytime you want to look at them. We'll show you how to do that. We wanted to go electronic, so that's all.
Not all things.
I think you're going to like this.
Okay, so. Thank you.
Just in case council says, why are we going to be hearing people off work? I can hear.
Not yet.
Hey, Councilman, asking you that.
I need your decision.
That's right, just so your arms. Not as much as we might tell.
Let's talk.
I want to know about.
Arpa.
Wayne County.
We're having a meeting.
Okay.
We have years later. ARPA, if you look at what I put together here, this is just Jeff's idea, so we'll discuss it. So, approved recommendations at the top is from the list that we submitted to council and then council actually voted on at their last meeting to approve. So, hard scape, the cabling, those at the fairgrounds, the security issues, Bearcat, engineering and contractual. And then they approved the dump truck at 150,000, we approved that last week. So, I put it under approved recommendations and that then is a total of $2,150,000, which leaves $2,150,981.
What documentation?
What we need to document?
Just invoices and purchase.
Correct. Then we have contracts, that becomes commitment when we pay it, that's obviously payment. Council recommendations, then, they came back to us, which was totally unexpected by me, where they had, a couple of them had asked me, what are the things that we can pay for that are already obligated with other funding? And so, I gave them a list and this is what they approved. Courthouse exterior, annex generator, chamber remodeling, EMA, ejector pump, annex ejector pump, some, expo hall, HVAC, and then they added a million dollars for highway projects, which includes parking lots at the fairgrounds. The bottom section then is what I'm suggesting based on what council has suggested. And we talked again about going back to them with the electronic speed limit signs, which we suggested in the beginning. They said no, I'm suggesting that we go back to them. I think it's an issue that really can improve traffic safety. People do slow down for those signs. If they'll give us approval, we can find out how many towns or locations, because, for example, Williamsburg is a high-traffic location on 35, it's not, it's not an incorporated town, but I think it would make sense to put some there. So, I've done some research, it's between $4,000 and $5,000 a sign. There are some lower levels that are available, but they don't have all the features that I can. That means about $10,000 per location one.
These are electronic or are they solar?
They're solar, but they have electronic signs, okay? So, they're powered by the sunlight.
Now, these are the red to green, when you get at the speed limit, it goes to green?
We actually have to follow NDOT guidelines and those are no longer allowable on highways. There may be some locations that are county roads that we could allow those, but they must have just changed that, you know, that rule recently, because a lot of the ones you see in Wayne County right now are the ones that change color. That would be my preference, because I think it makes it, it's very apparent that now you're at the speed limit or below. So, we'll see what we can do, but I think Steve looked into the guidelines with NDOT that require that it not have other messaging and it not change color. So, we'll see what we can come up with. At any rate, that $100,000 I put back in there. Then on recommendations of what we might go ahead and pay for out of what council agreed to, I rounded some of these numbers to make it easier to match the $2,150,000 we have. So, $600,000 is just about exactly the cost of the courthouse exterior and the annex generator.
In addition to the 283 up above?
No, if you add those two together, it's 601,059. I just rounded that to 600,000.
I'm confused. How can you have 283 still available?
Add 283,000 and, oh, I'm sorry, not in addition. This would be in place of that list. Council recommended the list in the middle.
Oh.
I'm saying cross that off.
So, still available or?
This is my recommendation.
Or.
Or, correct. So, we could approve, but council suggested or I'm suggesting these alternatives.
Okay.
And then you, the two of you can suggest anything else you want to suggest. But I'm suggesting electronic speed limit sign, courthouse exterior and annex generator, which that line item of 600,000 would replace the top two lines in the council recommendation. Then highway projects where they have a million, I would lower that to 400,000. Expo hall HVAC, they have 344,277, I would make that 300,000. Remember that the full project is already budgeted with appropriated funds.
Yeah.
And so, I would say convert 300,000 of that to ARPA. And then parking, storage and building improvements at the fairgrounds, I'm putting in, recommending 250,000. And so, for example, we know we want to increase the parking lot around the expo hall. We know that this is the year to reseal and repair parking at Coolman. So, this would give us plenty of money for expansion. We've also had a request for additional storage space out there for the new furniture. I'm not necessarily approving of the request that came to us, but we've also talked about walling off a section of the expo hall and perhaps a smaller section in Coolman where furniture could be stored when it's not in use. And so, that is another opportunity we also have talked about at Coolman in particular. We're planning to do, redo the roof, which is the original roof on Coolman. But, from the interior, if you look up, once there's no possibility of leaks, the ceiling tiles, the ceiling grid and the lighting really needs to be changed out. And so, that could be used for that, so.
Well, we wait another year and use first thing.
We can do that, but your definition of what we should spend for ARPA is not completely compatible with my definition, which is probably not completely compatible with Brad's definition. So.
I mean, it's not like we don't have another million dollars coming in.
Well, we don't have another million, we have another 800,000.
I'm talking about first thing, you know, in any way.
They've already paid us 200,000.
Well, I'm talking about year after year, it's like a river.
So, it's a small river of 800,000 left. At any rate, uncommitted ARPA is that last line, which is still completely uncommitted, could be committed to any projects that would come along. As long as it is uncommitted ARPA, it has to be committed contractually by the end of 2024, so we have 10 months left to get that done, which I think is why several on council are interested in doing some of these other projects. Now, I would direct your attention to that last bullet point at the bottom that says, commissioners and council agree that savings to the general fund will be put into a projects line item, which will require agreement of a majority of commissioners and a majority of council in order to be spent. So, that is, that is the agreement that Beth Leisure talked about at our last meeting. And that is the agreement that I think is necessary in order to expedite expenditure of ARPA funds. Again, remembering that there's a time limit on ARPA funds. There is no time limit on general fund money. So, we can spend it this year, next year, a year after that, a year after that, as long as we have an understanding with council that those dollars are going to be set aside in a project fund that will not be spent unless commissioners and council agree, which is what needs to happen with ARPA funds currently.
One point six-fifth, according to my math.
I think that's correct. So, Ron, in order to be binding, can it be binding?
Well, probably, that's the first question. I think best binding, the most binding we can make it to be, to have a record and a formal motion.
Right. Have a line item made.
Suspend the rules, yeah.
And does that mean it couldn't be changed later? You know, I think they'd have a hard time basically rescinding it if in fact there'd been contracts led in reliance, but short of that, we probably could.
And so, you know, I have the utmost confidence in council and there will, it appears at least, that there's no primarity for the three council seats that are up for reelection this year. So, I have, I have complete confidence that if they agree to this, that they will not rescind that.
That's, I mean, I think it's.
So, you know, is there, is there some risk? Possibly, but I'm fully confident that that would not happen.
Ron, can you discern the relationship was between council and commissioners on the expenditure of ARPA money as spelled out in the federal law? Did we have equal standing?
The rules for ARPA are different than the rules for CARES Act.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The executive body had a lot more smack than the fiscal body.
Until Congress changed the rules at the end of the CARES Act funding.
I'd just like to visit the language of ARPA local authority to dispense ARPA funds in order for.
It has to be appropriate. It had, that was council's, that was council's.
And I don't think we want to, we have a good working relationship.
Absolutely.
Well.
And we talked to them when they budgeted this and said, we will not spend this. You can go ahead and appropriate it, we will not spend it until we have agreement. They trusted us and I'm going to reciprocate and I'm going to trust them and I'm not going to spend the appropriated money unless they agree with us and I'm not, I have no doubt that if they agree to the same thing in the coming years, that they will allow for this process to continue.
Oh, I'm just trying to identify who's giving up the most and I think council is relinquishing, well, they didn't take a vote on it, there were nods.
They already appropriated the entire ARPA fund. It's in the budget, it's appropriated.
Oh, really, they already did that?
And we will not spend it. I will not vote to spend it. We've had that conversation. We've had that conversation until we're in agreement.
But we've never taken a vote on that.
Let's take a vote right now.
Wait a minute. So what you're suggesting we do is relinquish the majority, the votes. So they have seven votes and we have three.
No.
On the spending.
There are two bodies. The votes that count are four for them and two for us. It's not got anything to do with seven.
No, but there's, the bodies total ten.
That doesn't matter. That's irrelevant. There are two bodies and each one must agree. So we have to vote on a way to spend money. We have to vote, a majority of them have to vote to spend money.
Except you're, you're asking us to agree that the fund will be put into projects.
A majority of commissioners and a majority of council.
That's completely different.
That's, that's the intention.
I mean, our three votes will be totally diluted into a body of ten.
Okay, I will make that, I will make that change.
Thank you. I think.
Exactly what I intended. It requires a majority of council and a majority of commissioners in order to commit to these projects. And that's what we're doing right now. We initially, that list at the top, we submitted to them. We voted on the list at the top.
And we just happened to all agree on that particular.
We voted on that list at the top. We submitted it to the council. They voted to approve all of them but two. And that was two hundred thousand dollars. The signage and the, uh, the creating places funding for the non-health community.
But you're saying they've already appropriated even the creating places, hundred thousand dollars?
No, that's not.
They still had to appropriate, they appropriated the.
Transfer it into a line item for a.
So we still need their four votes to get the creating place. We still need their four votes to get expo hall HVAC. Okay, I, I misunderstood. I didn't remember them appropriating the whole ARPA fund for us to spend any way we want.
The alternative, well, no, that was not, that was not what they agreed to do.
The ARPA fund.
Had it appropriated with an agreement that we would go to them for their approval.
Exactly. And they'll have to transfer it from the, the, um, projects line to a specific project.
Yeah, we envision a, a line item for each funded project.
Correct. And that, those don't currently exist because we haven't, we haven't agreed to them. But, um, but, but what we're asking them to do is if they spend, we agree to spend the money now, that we will transfer that agreement to the amount of the general fund that we're, uh, we're saving by paying for this out of ARPA.
We're protecting these ARPA dollars by.
We're using the ARPA.
Using them and committing them.
So that we do not, so that we do not run into a time crunch where we would lose them spent in time.
Because we trust the council to.
I trust council to do exactly what we've agreed to do. And as part of it, we will, we will agree on projects.
But we really need to have the vote. We really need to have council to put it in writing just in case two of them resign.
As possible.
And you have someone who doesn't approve of what the commissioners would like to do.
So if, so let's talk now about the projects that I'm proposing. Cause that's, that's just me. Jeff sat down over the weekend and came up with this list, which leaves a half a million dollars uncommitted for whatever else, uh, we might come up with. But where are you at? I think we agreed the last time we talked that we would, we would want to put the speed limit signs back into the mix. So can we agree on that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then the next three projects, I'm sorry. Courthouse exterior and annex is one that, that we would, is currently budgeted out of the general fund. And this would shift it to ARPA funds. The highway projects would be the same, um, although it's really not, those aren't currently funded. So these would be ARPA funds that do not necessarily save general fund money.
Yeah. What, what do you put in that highway projects that are not in the parking lot at the fairgrounds? Cause you've got that down below.
Yeah, there was a list and I, I don't know if I've got it here, that Mike had submitted.
Calcium chloride tanks, repaint the main building, new roof on three sides of barn in Waynesboro, Wash Bay Farm, Pol barn, salt shed, send the paint to Pol barn.
And the total, what's the total amount on?
The total was one point two eight six.
Real wish list over a period of years.
It was. But that included the half a million dollars that we already.
Correct.
So take five hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand.
About.
But it's like thirty thousand for the calcium chloride tank, twenty-five thousand for repainting the main building, ten thousand for the new roof on Waynesboro, seventy-eight thousand for the Wash Bay barn, two hundred and ten thousand for Pol barn dump truck storage.
Yeah, they've got along fine with that. So the biggest hit is the dump truck storage. And we've got along fine.
And I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, but something smaller. Obviously repainting I think is important because it's a, I mean, it's if on the hill there, we want it to look good.
And the, the calcium chloride tank, I think.
I think we can knock that four hundred thousand down a lot without, uh, having a nice warm home for dump trucks.
So name a, name a number, an alternative number.
Uh, take the, um, five hundred thousand out for the, uh, storage tanks. And that's seven hundred thousand, right? Take, um, the two hundred and ten thousand for the dump truck storage. Is it two-ten you said? So that's down to.
Five. What else?
Five hundred.
Yeah. And I'm at four hundred, so.
Well, and there, it, it, a lot of that is just wish list over time. I mean, he doesn't ask him for this all at once.
So give me a number.
Two hundred. That would get you your, that, that would get you most of his list.
The only problem I see with that is council wanted to spend a million. So now you're saying two hundred, so we're eight hundred thousand dollar difference. They may not.
Highway couldn't even spend a million without adding to their wish list. Or you want gilded toiletries or something?
Well, at the time.
That includes paving.
That included the fairgrounds paving. So I took that out and, and made a separate line item.
I'm okay with four hundred thousand.
Okay.
I mean, that's off, that's practically, because we're really down to four ninety already with his entire wish list. Two-ten for the dump trucks takes it down to four ninety.
I'm okay with going down to three hundred thousand. Um, we still have uncommitted ARPA five hundred thousand. If for some reason that rises to the level, we can, we can take money out of that. You want to go to three?
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay, we're at three hundred thousand there.
I am.
Expo hall HVAC is, is, you know, rounding down from three forty-four to three hundred.
But we already have that, um, appropriated. Why do you want to pay for something that's already appropriated?
I already explained it several times.
Just to, to protect it from having to give it back. So you're anticipating getting that back? You're anticipating getting all this back?
Yes. Anything that's general fund, that would be part of the agreement.
Yeah, we can earmark projects in the future that, I mean, I understand completely why, why.
Okay.
I have no concern. We're just protecting them.
Parking, storage, building improvements at fairgrounds. Is two fifty okay? Is that two?
So that brings us up to six hundred thousand.
No, I thought we'd already agreed on, on the six hundred thousand for courthouse and annex generator.
Yeah, I mean, I think she's thinking that I'm a.
She's thinking the uncommitted ARPA, we can get six hundred thousand.
Okay, cause we took a hundred thousand off.
A hundred thousand off.
So we don't have more than two point one million left, yeah.
I'm good with that. Make that six hundred thousand.
That's okay, cause why, why give the highway their entire wish list?
I'm okay with, let's go with six hundred thousand, one hundred million at this point. And that's still the two point one five million. Less than a thousand dollars in.
I didn't bring, I didn't bring our former recommended list. Do you have our former recommended list that we had last Wednesday?
Somewhere. I guess I'm going to do this.
I guess, what, what did you drop off over the weekend?
We dropped off several of the smaller projects. We dropped, uh, the injector pumps. It's a total of about forty thousand dollars.
No, I'm talking about our wish list, our.
Oh, the still, the still available in the middle?
Yeah, the, yeah, for the commissioners list, what did you drop off?
A million dollars for additional funding for downtown revitalization. We dropped off, um, the possible increase in nine-one-one radio solutions, the homeownership program.
What is that? We don't, we, we, we're thinking of it as two different things that.
I, I think so too. Um, and that was one that, that Brad proposed. You, you want to talk a little bit about the, uh, homeownership down payment assistance program?
Yeah, I, I guess there's no reason to talk about it because we're not.
She just wondered what it was.
Homeowner, I, I'm talking about restoration, but homeowners down payment. Down payment I understand, but the other one I don't, I, I'm not sure.
Single family home rehab, you didn't understand? That's helping single family, uh, owner occupied housing renovations.
Okay, it's not building together. I was thinking you put building together back in there, but that's individuals, I mean, grants to individuals.
I've been thinking of building together as a, as a, uh, an opioid on the project.
The reason I favor it under ARPA is that not all of the incarcerated individuals that need this all encompassing program of training and rehabbing homes and rehabbing themselves are opioid related. Some of them are meth, some of them are alcohol. And there's still an alcohol problem out there.
And we can give them part of the, uh, thirty percent that's, that's not restricted.
Okay, if, if you're okay with spending some of the unrestricted on a restricted eligible program.
I don't think we can define with any certainty what, uh, the makeup of the participants is going to be for any program.
Well, it's just that the attorney general's exhibit E is very specific about the opioid settlement money having to go to treat the opioid crisis. And if you're sending money to an individual who's been incarcerated, who is being in a program that is alcohol only, we're not in keeping with the attorney general's guideline.
We're not doing an alcohol only program.
Well, I'm saying an individual might be alcohol only.
But the money's not going to him, it's going to.
Well, yeah, probably ninety percent would be opioid. So we could say, all right, ninety percent of your clientele are opioid related. So we're only going to fund this program to ninety percent.
I'm, I'm fine with.
Now, if you're okay with that, because I would hate to eliminate all the meth and alcohol people. They need help too.
I would love to eliminate meth and alcohol abuse.
Substance abuse. Because they get incarcerated and they need rehabilitation too.
I, I think we can figure that out. I don't see that as a real.
If, if, if you are in agreement with that, then I, I'm okay moving that to the, let's hope the attorney general is going to send us the money soon.
It'll be, it'll be soon enough.
Okay.
Um, the one stop center was the other thing that I eliminated. But that was a million dollars and nobody had anything going for, ever funded, let alone for a million dollars. It was that thing, the one stop sensor.
And also I just want to say that we're not taking any of this stuff off the table. We're just not approving it under ARPA right now. We are going to have the one point, six million dollars uncommitted in the general fund.
And still six hundred thousand of ARPA that's uncommitted.
Yeah, so it's, we're just shifting the money right now.
You're trusting we're going to get enough council, you're, you're trusting on four council votes.
Um, I think we'll have at least four. And the, and the issue is, continues to be, number one, we need to get these projects moving. And so to, 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 to every meeting just be staring each other in the eye saying, I'm not moving. Well, I'm not moving. Let's move. Let's make some, let's agree to some things we can agree to.
Could have done this years ago.
Let's agree to some of the things we can agree to and let's, let's move everything forward. So what I'm, what I think I'm hearing you say is we're gonna, we're gonna replace the council's recommendation to us with this new list, with that change. So we're at a hundred thousand for speed limit signs, six hundred thousand for the courthouse exterior and annex generator, three hundred thousand for highway projects, three hundred thousand for the expo hall HVAC, two hundred and fifty thousand for parking, storage and building improvements at the fairgrounds, and six hundred thousand in the uncommitted ARPA.
I'd like to talk about that. Um, because I know you had talked to Dr. Pizzano, the consultant who, uh, worked with the foundation on her findings.
I, I only talked to her briefly before she came to town, so I didn't talk to her about.
She gave her preliminary assessment after talking to the animal control officers and all of the nonprofits that shelter, um, and Animal Care Alliance, that is the low-cost veterinary care center and others throughout the county. Her presentation Wednesday after our meeting was excellent. She has, uh, uh, preliminarily found that, um, one of Wayne County's biggest problems is that we have many barriers to adoptions, which is why we have had, um, kind of warehousing of, um, dogs and cats. And she, she gave us kind of a preliminary glimpse of what her final report should be, which, uh, she originally had until the end of second quarter. I mean, that's what the foundation agreed to, that she wouldn't have to present that until June. But she says she's going to get that to us much faster because, uh, she won't take that long. Um, and she, uh, she feels that, uh, breaking down the barriers to, uh, much more aggressive adoption by our community will help overcome the, uh, long-term housing of dogs and cats in Wayne County. She doesn't feel that is in step with how modern sheltering should work. And she'll instead be recommending something that she has advised and has put in place in a number of other counties is something called the pet resource center, which will allow an animal to be placed in a new home and adopted at great, greater numbers. So you're not paying to house an animal for three or four years like we have in the past. I know, just makes no sense to pay forty thousand dollars to house the same dogs for four years, you know? Anyway, uh, a pet resource center, uh, would allow for a dog to be adopted after it is fully vetted, veterinarian, if you will, so that it is already spayed and neutered as Indian law requires. I mean, it requires you to pay for spaying and neutering before it's adopted. But we know that Wayne County, uh, adoptive pet owners are not actually going through with the surgery, but actually spaying and neutering the animals before they go out the door and also, uh, getting their, um, immunization, uh, especially for rabies, which is also state law. And that would address the newfound concern as expressed in the board of health meeting yesterday. yesterday, that rabies has now entered Indiana, and stray dogs become a new issue when you have rabies identified within a state. So, this pet resource center would not be housing animals for long term, but would be short-term, getting them out the door faster, and her recommendation would not do that. But as a part of that, she has already concluded that we do not have adequate facilities for such a pet resource center, and will be recommending that we build a new structure. So, with that in mind, I do feel, since we're paying her handsomely for her recommendations, that we stand ready to earmark some of that remaining $600,000 for a pet resource center. That will not be a warehouse for cats and dogs, but one that will bring us into modern animal control standards, and 600,000, even if we used all of that for an animal resource center, probably wouldn't do it over time, but it would certainly get one established that could be added onto through a combination of public and private participation. But at her presentation last Wednesday was Mayor Oler, City Bethfields, and a former counselor who's been on the task force, and of course, it was at the foundation. The entire task force, I think, had a glimpse of what it was going to be, probably not nearly as thorough, because she had visited with a lot of other animal entities between her meeting with the task force and her presentation last Wednesday. But I would like to make the case for us adding a pet resource center or animal control or animal care, animal something. Animal control, I think, is the government terminology for it, especially with rabies entering the picture now, with that 600,000, and actually put a name on it, especially since we did ask the people, our county-wide health meeting gave us an idea of what a great many people feel is a good way to spend ARPA dollars. That meeting at the Coleman Center, we certainly heard from a lot of different people about the need for animal concern, and honestly, we could probably have the opportunity to get private sector donations for an animal project better than we would a sump pump or a dump truck.
Very likely, very likely. So, I think we should leave it as uncommitted ARPA at this point to present it to council tonight. I want to see the report.
Oh, Dr. Pizano will present it to us in person within the next three weeks, she thought?
Good.
So, I hope you can give it some time on our agenda.
We'll work on that. I don't see why we couldn't.
Yeah, she, I mean, we paid for it. And by the way, Richmond did say they are totally out of ARPA money and, and could not be expected to contribute to an animal resource center. That was sad news.
Well, we may have to agree to disagree on that.
They could be our customer. We could kill them, $100,000 a month or something.
So, with that in mind...
But I, Dr. Pizano was great. She...
Good. Your doubts initially.
Well...
I would like to...
About having to go out of state, because, you know...
I'd like to make this list the recommendation, the commissioner's recommendation back to council tonight.
Second, what's that?
Yeah, second.
There's one other change down here. You're going to make that at a commissioner/council's agree separately. I would like to add the majority of commissioners/council present. You know, I don't want it to have to be four councilmen. I would like it to be the majority present.
It has to be a majority of council. If there's only three of them there, two of them can't, can't agree to anything. That's not, that's not a quorum of council.
But if there's only six present...
It still has to be four. Three is not a majority of those present.
But if there's only five present, I think it can be three.
It still has to be four.
It has to be four regardless.
To anything without four votes.
You have to have a quorum.
Well, you have a quorum with five.
Yeah, but you, you can have a quorum, but you have to have...
But you can't.
You can't have a majority of those present.
It has to be a majority of the membership.
Correct.
Are you sure about that, Ron? What if five councilmen...
Are you saying legally, or you're talking about the agreement you want to make?
Legally.
No, I'm talking about legally.
Depends on the action. I think there's, council can act.
Council can act?
I'll double check.
I mean, if you only have five councilmen present...
They've got to have four votes to do anything.
I think that's only on fiscal matters.
What is not fiscal about this? We're spending money. Could we vote?
This is kind of a...
We did not. We have left sheet.
Kind of a gentleman's agreement vote that we're asking for.
I guess I'm not clear on what you're even asking.
I mean, what, what we're voting on right now is this entire sheet, including the line down here.
Yes.
You don't think we need a majority present? You think it goes without saying that for them to take action, they have to have four votes.
They have to have four votes in favor.
Four positive votes.
Correct.
Okay. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Co-syposed? Same sign? Motion carries. All right.
I can work that out.
Anything else? You've signed or anything? All right.
I think you know that the two new members of the health board are Mr. Woker and Dr. Jim Swander.
Correct. And they, they were there, both there at the meeting yesterday.
Have we sent them letters announcing our appointment?
I hope so, because they were at the meeting after that.
We don't have the addresses for them, no.
No, not to them. That would be, we just sent to, to the health board.
Okay, we put it in writing.
We put it in writing, and they sent it to, to the state, and they communicated with the two new members. Okay, if there's nothing further, are you ready to adjourn? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.